I'll call the Bradenborough Planning Commission meeting to order for Monday, April 3rd, 2017. First order is to approve the minutes of March 6th.
I saw them online and I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Great. Second, all in favor? Very good.
I have a question about the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Just because there was a lot of brainstorming and like personal experience feedback. Just wondering if that's always something that's going to be attributed to people and put in the minutes. As far as my, I feel this way about this neighborhood and I personally might feel more comfortable if that were... Like some of the bullet points are generic and not attributed.
Members.
But some of them are, yeah.
I tend to, yeah, so I did these minutes and I tend to be pretty comprehensive. I tried to, I try to, it's a good point and I'm happy to rewrite them. You know, definitely that much detail does not need to be in the minutes. I kind of like it because I can then read them and remember what was done at the meeting, but I completely understand.
Right, especially for our focus group sort of atmosphere. Something that changes sort of how I would contribute if I know that it's going to be attributed to me officially.
Or we could also, you could request maybe that certain things are not, right? Like as we're talking, if you're like, hmm.
Don't say I said this.
Right, right.
Well, it is on TV. So, I mean, I don't know.
You can run, but you can't hide.
Yeah, I completely, and I kind of struggled a little bit because some of it is, you know, like you're just kind of working through things and it doesn't necessarily shape anything. I completely understand.
But it's so cool, like 45 years from now.
Right.
And then we like are working on some historical project. Look at the commission meeting. Do you remember Elizabeth?
Well, I do have areas that...
No, I just...
I can keep that in mind going forward, for sure.
When it comes to this, it all brainstorm sessions, I think that would make me feel more comfortable.
Sure.
I was just gonna say, maybe that's something we could keep in mind for when we're talking about public focus groups too. If there's a way to help members of the public feel comfortable sharing.
Okay, any announcements?
A couple announcements. We received a letter of resignation from Shannon. She took a new, as soon as she got appointed last summer, she took a new job and it kind of, there was some conflicts and she was feeling spread thin. So, we'll have an opening, I'm not sure if the select board will appoint in, for July. I don't know if they're gonna, they have to announce openings and I think they may have done the last one for the year. So, kind of terms end June, in June, so we'll, I don't know, they might not appoint.
So nobody else is allowed to resign for the rest of your years out.
Until the end of, until June, you can give us a notice. Serve out till June, please. Hi, Casey. So, the other announcement is that, I can't remember where we were at the March meeting. I think that we had received proposals for the downtown parking study and so at this point, we've reviewed and we are working on contracting with our preferred firm. We had some really great applications.
It was really interesting and nice to know that we put out a proposal, good people will respond and get the work done for just what we wanted. It was really...
Yeah, and there, I mean, it was like there were two firms that we could interview and we felt like we couldn't go wrong with either one, so.
That's great.
So, once we were able to successfully contract.
Any public comments? Seeing none. Okay, we're ready for our downtown master plan work session.
Okay, so, listening to last month's meeting was interesting and what it kind of revealed to Rod and I is that it was not necessarily an activity that we wanted to go out to the public with, that we felt like we wanted to define what the downtown area was. Because people have lots of different definitions of what's in the downtown. So, Rod incorrectly stated at that meeting that, you know, I think he said, you know, "two miles from downtown was kind of what's considered walkable." It's only a half mile.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
He has one leg and he walks far. So, we did a little mapping and the first cut was a half mile radius. I'll send this around, unfortunately I don't have it to put it up. And even that looked a little bit long to me, so we created some maps that shows a quarter mile walk shed and I have one for each of you. So, we can pass the half mile around, everybody take a quarter mile and, you know, maybe for our purposes, it captures... I've got two of these half miles. I had to leave a bit today, so I didn't get to leave. I can make some more copies, they just won't be in color. So, you'll see the quarter mile, like the half mile takes in most of Wantastikit Drive. It goes down, you can see the little yellow line also on the bigger quarter mile map. So, the yellow is a half, that kind of goes off.
Are there two different maps?
Yeah. So, we have fewer copies of this one.
That takes in the whole sharing, so this is a... I can go rent some. But, I mean, the half mile is the walk shed, that's kind of what all the smart growth kind of measures use. So, we could, you know...
That's uphill.
And I think the fight...
It's a little like we're suddenly in the river, right?
Yes.
Did we reach the island or we...
Oh, yeah, we would reach the island. I mean, the island's Hinnisdale's though.
Yeah, no, I know.
But, yeah, we just didn't cut it off. We're in the river there. So, I don't, so we were thinking for the purposes of the master plan, you know, the half mile or maybe even the quarter mile, the half mile just takes into more residential neighborhoods, which is okay too, based on some of the discussions from last meeting.
So, are you looking for an opinion?
Yeah.
I like the half mile. Because I feel like this is area, you know, I feel like I've walked around in all of this. I mean, I kind of go for the mile, so, or like three quarters of a mile or something. You know, we live on Orchard Street and we walk downtown routinely.
And that would include the farmers market there?
Yeah, it's a little further, but yeah, so.
Half mile certainly works for me.
Yeah, this, this ends up going, I'm trying to place it, so it's like this part of Williams Street. It's like, it ends like right here for a half, for a half mile, right?
Solar Hill.
Can we be as intentional though, if we're focusing on such a big area?
That's a good question. I mean, I think the next thing that I was gonna get into is defining kind of smaller districts within the downtown. So, I was feeling like, there's a downtown design guidelines that were done in the early 2000s and they talk about like the Wells Fountain area and the urban core and the waterfront. So, you know, that we expand and have some neighborhoods, I think, you know, it's, it'll probably be broader in the neighborhoods, but I think leaving, I feel like leaving them out though misses something. If we focus narrowly on this red area, which is the designated downtown as part of the state's program.
Is there a downside to including more rather than less? Just to play, I had like a really big downtown, so keep in mind, I'm coming from like, this was my downtown. Is there a downside, just that was ad kit?
It doesn't really work as well, like definition wise, like it's not really as practical. It's setting a more realistic bound.
So, where would that come into play, like if you had, you know, if we had the half mile or what have you? And would that, is there any case where that would be more unyieldy than the smaller one? I'm leaning towards the bigger one, but just to understand.
I mean, the way I view it, I think in that half mile, it takes into maybe some more public space, maybe some town-owned parks, little pocket parks that exist, maybe some town-owned land. It's probably gonna get into more, the potential for more sidewalk issues or those kind of things. When I think about some of the paths that you talked about the last time, the little connectors, like from Elliott to up to the Green Street School or even up to High Street. I mean, it allows for, you know, maybe some more potential to address those kind of type projects. You know, there's most, because there's not a lot of civic or commercial buildings in that area. You know, I don't know that we'd spend as mu, do as much detail there, but just because it's gonna be private decisions, you know, what gets done there, but... But I think thinking of the downtown as more than just the commercial building, so it could be worth looking at.
Yeah, it seems like, I mean, if you're thinking about, like you're planning for how the downtown is used, you'd be also thinking about how people are accessing it, which I would think would be walking or like bike lanes or, you know.
So, do we want to go, you know, for now, just for purposes of discussion, you know, move forward with the half mile and maybe that, maybe that's something that we bring out to the public and get some feedback.
I don't think that because I definitely walk downtown.
I'm, I'm an aggressive walker, so I'm in the one mile range.
Yeah.
That's good.
I like at least half mile.
I like the quarter mile, but I think I'm overruled, so.
The red is the quarter mile?
No, the red is the downtown district, so the blue is the quarter mile.
I guess I feel like, the way we're talking about it too, it's like, well, I walk downtown. Well, if we consider everything downtown, I guess what I mean is, if someone said, "Do you want to meet me for copy downtown?" I wouldn't think they meant Spur Street. I'd know they meant Main Street and Elliott Street and High Street.
But I don't think we're considering that, I mean, I think what we're considering downtown is the red area and this is kind of like the walk shed to downtown, so I don't think it's too different.
Then behind that.
Oh, yeah, I really like the bigger waterfront because it also includes some of the, like the hospital and the retreat farm and all that, some of the very cool big institutions and properties that really define neighborhoods.
And is this red line what is considered, what is zoned as the urban center right now?
No, it's the designated downtown, which is that state of Vermont. It's a state of Vermont designation, we have to do things to be designated, but within that area, commercial property owners can be eligible for certain tax credits, for code improvements and historic facades and whatnot, so.
Is this the downtown district that they pay that extra tax for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So, I think in, in any document, it would definitely be framed as a walk shed and, you know, we're probably gonna focus more on that district. But I think the residential neighborhoods are interesting to look at. All right, so, it gets a little trickier going out a little bit, but that's okay. We're gonna talk about, well, first, actually, we're gonna do that. Maybe we can kind of figure out what are the different character areas of the downtown. So, first, we can start within the red area and then kind of bring it out if different residential neighborhoods maybe have different characteristics. So, and I envisioned this in the, in the final document as kind of a way to break up the information because we want the report to be usable so that if somebody lives on High Street, you know, they don't have to read everything, they can kind of look at their area. So, I guess one place to suggest to start was that early 2000s report that I had referenced where, and we talked about it a little bit when we were doing the zoning, for those of you that were on the commission at the time, but kind of the area from, it didn't go up to the Commons, I don't think, but it was basically from the courts across the street, Wells Fountain, down to High Street. And that was kind of characterized as having civic buildings set back further from the street as opposed to the ones, the continuous block buildings from High Street, probably down to Flat Street. So, that's kind of, that was defined as the Wells Fountain area. And then, as I mentioned, the other one was, I think, called the Urban Core, which is the block building pattern. And then they had the waterfront, they didn't really define what, like Flat Street, the waterfront was the, is the industrial properties and the town-owned property right on the Connecticut River, so east of the Graduate Center.
I think we should definitely break that out, especially because the waterfront's gonna be the subject of such new thinking because of the bridge changes.
That area is pretty unsettled right now. It might not be as big of a change as we thought there might be. That's kind of still in discussions.
About the bridge?
Yeah, actually, that's where Rod was today, he was in Montclair. No, the bridge is happening. It's what happens with the land is really kind of up in the air. So, we may not see the change that we had initially thought.
A bike path, you mean?
More green space, bike path. The existing bridges, you know, I think they're in question as well, what's going to happen to them.
So, is the question where the bridge will land or...
No, I think, as far as I know, the bridge will still land...
At the end of the...
At the end of the Graduate Center of Parking Law.
Well, even if the, the change isn't as great, I think that the bridge landing where it would would still impact that region of the city.
Yep.
I mean, even just, you know, creating whatever sort of a dead end at the existing bridge is changed.
Yes, it is. And that's this area down here, so this is like if you've come over the bridges and you're looking west up to Main Street. And this would be from the junction, looking, looking down at it. So, what will happen is all the traffic will be coming from Vernon Street. A right-of-way will still need, Depot Street will still exist because of the business down there. But there'll be a great reduction in the amount of traffic. But again, still needing access to the Whitestone Station and this parking lot and that open space here. And then what becomes of the bridges remains to be seen too. I don't think the state of New Hampshire wants to remain owning them, so who takes them over is the question.
Hmm, does that mean we can, we can get part of the bridge to, I don't know.
Do we want it now? Do we want a bridge? It's not, not on town and land.
I was gonna say, the other piece about this is that there's that level difference, right? So, it's almost like that little chunk along the river, because it's down, it ends up feeling isolated, you know? Like it's, so I feel like, I agree with Elizabeth, like I feel like that section needs to be pulled out as a special kind of area to think about.
I think that it's, one of the sad things is that that's like, the waterfront access is just so down there and, you know, you don't feel any connection to it.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because I spent a lot of time working on waterfront redevelopment, trying to approach the water and, you know, the new thinking now, not that they should turn away towards Main Street as Bradenborough has done, but the fact that, you know, climate change could raise the flood levels so high, those two thoughts oppose one another now. And so, you really have to think about access to the water, yet maintaining care for flood level rise. But I think the biggest factor against access to the waterway is the train.
Yeah.
And they're so hard to deal with. It's kind of impossible.
Yep.
They're difficult to deal with.
So, when you say, Kate, that it steps down a bit, are you suggesting that the entire Connecticut River waterfront, you know, all behind the Main Street buildings be included? Or are you thinking just this?
I think Kathy said this area, that's the first thing about just stepping down.
Okay. Well, yeah, and it's kind of both, both pieces. I mean, from the point of view of when you're on Vernon Street, like there's only the riverside because the other side is a cliff, right? And there's nothing and there's never gonna be anything unless someone gets really creative about how they're gonna build into that. So, it's, it's really that like, you know, altitude difference?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Top of gravity.
Thank you. That makes this be like a separate chunk. But I kind of feel the same, you know, so I mean, I feel like that needs to be treated on one level, but then there's the, the whole Arch Street access back here. You know, I feel like there could be so many cool little things back there. It is the railroad that's tricky and if, it's like if you could build over it or you could, I don't know. You know, I feel like there, there, there could be really interesting creative ways to access the water back there.
There's, there's also no easy way to get from this waterfront to the other waterfront without walking on the railroad tracks. You have to go back up to Main Street and then come back down Arch Street. So, having them as a connected identity, getting back to that, yeah, I don't know if that's a reality right now, but it could be something that could be in the future, so, you know, thinking out loud. It seems like they, they should stay connected in the hopes that, you know, infrastructureally, maybe someday, they will be connected.
And I think we'd have to be careful because I know two fatalities on the tracks in the past year.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. We, Chris and I went, we went sneaking around behind the buildings back here between the meetings and I was thinking like, oh, it'd be so wonderful to have like, if Arch Street could extend north and have there be like a stairway and a walkway back here. Because it's really pretty there, but then I was looking at it, there are train tracks here and how could you keep people safe too?
Be great to have something like that river path along, what river is that again? Is the West River? Be great to have something like that.
Well, there really is.
Yeah, and there's, there's efforts to kind of connect.
To consolidate that, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, walk, bike path rather than...
Yeah, I mean, even if there has to be some... Yeah, I think the choke point is kind of where the confluence of the West and the Connecticut and that is where one of the train tracks.
Springfield, Vermont did a Tunerfield Trail, have you seen that?
Yeah.
That was a pretty nice thing.
But then, is that a working railroad still there?
No, no. So, but they put, they did put pavement, I don't know, along the side of the Black River there. It's, it's near a big highway, fairly large highway going into town, but they put up guardrails and signs like tall fence, you can't, right in front of cars. It came out pretty nice. I was surprised how many people use it, especially in the summer, it's very busy.
I think also because of the safety issues back there. I mean, it's another reason to focus on this area as its own area, because people are using it. Like people are back there and so if we could, I don't know, shine the light on it and figure out how to like utilize it in a, in a better way.
And homeless people, so.
Yeah. My sister-in-law used to live in one of the buildings on that side of Main Street and she'd park, this is when she was pregnant and then when she just had her first daughter. She would park out back and then have to walk up, there's really five stairs, knickety outdoor stairs to get into her apartment. But yeah, it definitely has an interesting character and there are definitely people that live there that could benefit from something here.
So, definitely a waterfront area. How about kind of the Flat Street area? In the EPA report, we called that the Lower Whitestone, kind of defined that as a neighborhood. And I think that Rod and I would probably like to see some of those concepts carried forward in this downtown master plan and getting more, you know, community...
That's really a great plan. We want to highlight it and incorporate it wherever we can.
So, we could call that area, you know, even, that basically was defined by the project. So, it goes from the lower end of Burr Street on the West Stone Brook, which is probably within, I think it is in the two mile.
The lower, where, where, the lower end of Burr Street, you said?
Yeah, it's this one.
Right.
Right here, this, yeah, this property. Yeah, right here. So, that was the, the big, the land we're trying to get conserved. And then came down Frost, Frost Place, so, so there's the steep walls basically that kind of define it. Which is on Main Street.
Yeah, that seems logical to kind of treat the whole area. But then that, that very first area at the north, the Wells Fountain area, I would include that, the area just above it, like by the Commons. I think you're close enough to that to be part of it.
Yeah, you would say the Commons is part of the Wells Fountain section?
Well, if not the Commons, the, these law firms and whatnot across...
And I think the Flores and all the stuff on London.
Those things, yeah.
That makes sense to me too.
The Elks Club and whatnot.
And I also, in my mind, there's kind of this natural grouping of the tree streets all the way over to the retreat, right? Like, and there's, you know, there's a break line here because of the retreat woods, but it's like this and retreat sort of like goes together as a chunk.
What's the southern, what do you think of the southern boundary of that neighborhood?
Cedar.
Cedar Street.
Does, does your neighborhood have a particular identity? That people refer to it as?
Yeah.
I mean, so I don't, I don't know, I mean, I think that's a distinctive area.
Where do you live?
Yeah.
I live on Wantastikit, just over by the river.
Oh, right, yeah.
And actually, a lot of it is kind of defined by like, like the Episcopal Church neighborhood.
Yeah. So, there's the more historic kind of older homes and then your subdivision, which is more...
More modern, yeah. So, I would say like the whole Tyler Street, North Street might be one group and Wantastikit and the street behind it might be another, that front's onto...
Would you include the like Vermont Ave, Eaton Ave in that?
They're their own. They are.
Yeah, it's really, the road is too busy. It's advised, right?
So, yeah, I think this whole Eaton Place is a neighborhood and then the Wantastikit is one and then the streets around the church are another.
It's so interesting because I would have lumped, lumped all those into one.
Ideally, we would.
What you asked.
But I don't, I don't live there. Well, I know that there is different issues. For example, I mean, we have had people from the kind of Episcopal Church area approach us about maybe getting, you know, put on the National Register as a historic district. So, you know, that might not be the same for you in...
There's a revised interest in that.
Yes.
And really, there, you know, I went to a neighborhood party the other day and most of the people were from this area, but, you know. Actually, zoning-wise, this area has a lot more to come, the homes and multiple homes.
Which one?
The Tyler Street.
Yeah.
And ours is just right in the middle, so that's distinction.
Yeah.
I, I actually feel like my neighborhood is a lot like the Tyler Street. I live in Oak Street and there's a lot of those old giant Victorian houses that, that most of them are, are two-family or have been two-family and are now being reconverted or going the other way. But yeah, I mean, to me, the sort of old street forest street neighborhood feels, in a way, a lot like the Tyler Street neighborhood. I don't know if you can imagine.
Yeah, right.
Well, in terms of historic character, I think it's very similar.
Yeah.
Different styles architecturally, but. Similar feel and character.
And then there's kind of, there's the residential area basically between, along High Street. That's kind of mixed, there's offices and, and residential. And then kind of the denser, like where does Green Street fit in? In some ways, it's a lot like Elliot Street to me. It's pretty dense, a lot of multifamily, a lot of single family too.
It's topographically separated though, so this is, because I live here, I think of my neighborhood as being the area right around Elliot Street, so the Flat Street Elliot Street triangle.
Yeah.
And Green Street because I have to go up a hill to get yonder feels different. But I, I do get what you're saying. It's, it's similar housing. The age of the homes is different. The homes, I've been noodling around in archives, the age of some of the homes on Elliot Street is quite old. Quite a bit older than the homes on Green Street. So it's, it's, there's some difference in character of the, the.
Architecture of the homes?
Yep. But the use is similar.
What, where does the feet neighborhood, where are the boundaries of that? I mean, I know it's Frost Elliot or.
So I, usually when people are talking, but I think they also include like Elliot Terrace and Stu Place. And there, I've heard people on Frost Place also saying they're part of that neighborhood.
Does, does all of Frost Street, is Frost Street included or is?
I would include all of Frost.
Because there is that overlap between what we've kind of defined as the Lower Whitestone because that was taken into account in the report. But that didn't include Elliot.
Yeah, I mean, and I, you know, I think you can make an argument for throwing Green Street into that neighborhood as well. Because the character's similar. So, you know, when we're talking about like what's, what's the vision for these neighborhoods? I think Green Street in terms of practicality would fit well with that. And it's probably, you know, the vision for Green Street is probably gonna be more similar to visioning for Elliot Street versus High Street, which is different character in terms of today's views. I just, I get nerdy about like that.
Yeah.
No, I see what you mean. You might not necessarily call them your neighbors, but they're similar.
Yeah, I think there, I think it's, there's some overlap. I think that's okay between like you were saying, the, the Lower Whitestone neighborhood of call that. And then what you might include in like the, the Green Street Promise Community Neighborhood is targeting sort of something that overlaps too with that area.
And then the next area would be kind of Canal Street and the neighborhoods off of South Main.
And I, I don't, does anybody here live in those areas? I think of Canal and South Main and. And then having like a, lost now this street.
Which one?
Homestead.
Oh, Horton Homestead. And Clark Canal.
And Clark and Canal. I think, I think if those being kind of like one little sort of new part of lots of like infill and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, because they're sort of only accessed from Canal. Like they don't break through to the other part of the neighborhood. So it's almost like Prospect becomes the border.
There's a steep hill there.
Of that other, right, like, it's like Prospect down to like the high school.
I think there's, there's definitely a divide there.
Yeah, I think.
In that neighborhood. It's around Highland or Pine Street where it goes from bigger multifamily houses to just little, some single family houses.
Yeah.
So this also gets kind of the Washington Street is kind of the.
Washington, you say Washington? I don't, I don't know Highland very well, but I know there's some bigger ones on.
Well, I think the break, like when you're driving up Canal Street, the break happens at Washington.
Yeah.
You know, so I do, I do think that Clark Canal and Horton Homestead are kind of, they're a bit different. They're really old. And there's some, they're both on the National Register too. And then, yeah, you're saying a break up in the other neighborhoods? Yeah, I don't know if it would be Washington.
Washington to Pine Street, there's some sort of, but I feel like Fuller Drive and over is all these like small.
Which one is Fuller?
Come on, I'm moving to.
Yeah.
Gosh, I like, I have friends that live in all, and I don't notice anything, I, I don't even know what you're talking about.
The difference in that houses?
Washington, Washington is quite old. Highland is a little mixed. I'm not as familiar with Pine. I think once, yeah, Pine might be kind of the break.
This was developed in the twenties, starting in the twenties.
Yeah, and this is all. These are kind of Victorian-ish.
Yeah, and then these are over here.
A lot of carriage houses, like Washington Street has carriage houses that were converted into, so it's.
Prospect is beautiful.
So you move into Fuller? I don't know, Fuller. Is that, does Samira, Samira and Chris live on the?
Oh, yeah?
Right.
Oh, cool.
Wait, where are they?
Samira and I.
I wanted to ask about Esteville. I think, do you, it looks like you have a little chunk of Esteville included in here. Is that considered a distinct neighborhood difference?
Yeah. Yeah, I was kind of thinking like, there's something about the level of Burge Street, like Burge almost over to Fairview seems like an area to me.
You see, as we talk about these areas, I'm gonna be very honest. I'm getting a little bit like, this is getting quite big and unwieldy because this means outreach.
Well, yeah, so are we, so we pretty much defined the downtown.
Oh, we're way out of downtown.
And then we've defined this walkable area.
Yes.
And so what are you asking for now?
Well, I'm not sure we, I mean, I, you know, I, if we go out that far in defining different neighborhoods, you know, I can take a pass at that. You know, there are definitely distinctive neighborhoods in some of those older neighborhoods. So that we're aware of, like.
Because we could go on and on.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I don't think we want to.
I wouldn't necessarily go past the downtown.
I mean, we might address some of the issues there, but I don't think we're gonna get into it in depth.
So rein it back into areas that actually.
Touch the downtown area.
Boundaries within the downtown.
Yeah.
Well, it pretty much covered everything then.
I think we covered it. I mean, we didn't get, the High Street kind of area touches it. Kate, you mentioned you felt High Street was different than Green Street. So maybe putting Green Street with feet is, is a bit better than, maybe High Street's kind of its own. I don't know, is High Street ever considered as part of the tree streets? I know that sounds silly.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. No, yeah. I mean, the character of it changes when you, when you hit Western at that intersection with green and the tree streets are kind of like, you know, past that, so.
When we're, when we're thinking about this, I think maybe what this conversation is highlighting for me is one of the interesting things about Brattleboro is the topography makes such small areas of that field very neighborbuddy. And that's one of the things that drew me to Brattleboro. You know, so it's, it's maybe both a way like we're defining maybe areas that you could be targeting for one thing or another. But I think it's also perhaps an asset of the character of the town.
There's like hidden mix and cream.
Yes.
It's, it's exciting.
Feel like that. And there's so many areas of the town, it's like, I still have not been to. Or like when we walked on Burge Street, you know, or.
Yeah, I like Frost Place a lot. I mean, it's really cool. It just floods. And you have to live with a contractor's yard for it. For now. Okay. Yeah, so I think, I think we, we can kind of break those up on a map for the next time. That would be okay. So the next thing that I wanted to do is kind of, for these red areas, for the red boundary, is kind of define the gateways to the red area. And, you know, I think, I, I agree with Liz, kind of bringing the Wells Fountain up to the Commons is kind of my idea of downtown. I mean, I know land use wise, you know, this, this red line gets a bit narrowly defined too because they want a concentration of commercial businesses. So for the purposes of the downtown designation, it's all offices up on the Commons. So that's why it's not in. So I guess for this gateway, you know, we can pass around colored markers or colored pencils. You can kind of mark up the gateways. But wanted to talk about, you know, how do they feel? How can we improve those areas? If we're narrowing it down, any suggestions, that kind of thing? We can do it on the big map or on the small maps.
What do you mean designated color?
No, just draw circles.
What do you mean when you say gateways?
So a gateway is where there's like a strong identity, kind of, you know, you've hit a character area. But it's generally on a major transportation corner, eh, quarter, sorry, so.
Gateways to downtown.
Like what you know, you've hit downtown when you're kind of in this, in this spot.
With the guy with the sign on his chest saying, I'm embarrassed for our president. That's kind of a gateway?
I know you guys ran into this, but you know, like, to me, this is a gateway. The top of High Street, you know, right before you drop into downtown and kind of like, you know, you're entering downtown. Look, all of a sudden, when you come over that hill and you start dropping down.
Well, that's interesting. I kind of think it's fine around.
Do you think School Street?
That intersection.
When I walk down to work every day, walk down Green Street and then when I hit that tiny guy's School Street before Elliot, I'm like, alright, I'm downtown, like hit the laundromat.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the laundromat is on Elliot.
Yeah.
I love that laundromat.
But that little park then.
You mean the laundromat that isn't there anymore?
No, the one across from, the one, yeah, the one that's not there, but the building is there.
Yeah, that they returned into the other thing. Where we had our EPA meetings there?
No, you're talking about the small one, Lawton.
The small one to the left when you're walking down.
Oh.
The one with the cool.
Yeah, the really neat.
The one that lost my button.
Sorry.
I don't, you know, are you, I mean, I, I feel like there are certain roads that are the gateway. And then there's other roads where you could get into town from that road.
No, the major, the major roads.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe there is one, you know, whether or not there's one from Elliot Street, you know, it's used a lot, that road, for sure. But you know, maybe there's not one on Flat Street because Elliot, Putney Road, Route 30 and 142 are the gateways.
Yeah. You know, this is interesting because it's like, there's this intersection at High Street, which you could consider a gateway. I'm always coming to town from here. So to me, this is the gateway because I'm always choosing to go down Green Street depending on like where I'm going. Like, you know, it's either that way or that way or that way. So this seems like the gateway to me.
There's a spot on High Street where it starts to go downhill where you hit, there's a couple of big Victorians on the right. That's sort of, to me, that's the gateway. That's the gateway to the urban section when you're driving like.
Well, so I guess, I mean, maybe the, rather than, you know, having all different ideas of what the gateway is, I guess when you think of the gateways, do you feel like there needs to be improvement in those areas so that you know you've arrived someplace?
Lamp posts. Like those bright white, I don't know, every new town I drive into, I always feel like there's enhanced like posts.
Really?
Yeah.
Like a, there's a unifying kind of.
Yeah, and like new concrete, new sidewalk and new lamp posts for some reason. And, and I would go back to the gateway definition, maybe consider from the interstate, you know, like if you were to get off either exit one, two, or three, what would be the closest path to downtown? And that could be a gateway as well.
Wilmington does it with flowers.
Yeah, they do. When you're on that, you're like, no.
We were just in search of his friends and I was just thinking like, what is defining that? And it's, they actually have signage.
Yeah, some places have signage too. They're totally built up. The road like now entering a designated downtown district or something.
I would love to see sidewalks on both sides of the streets once you hit that gateway. For me, going out, walking out Putney Road by the courthouse is always a little bit of a.
Oh, yeah. That's horrible. You're so right.
Yeah, to me, a comfortable downtown would have both sides.
I have to walk down there all the time. And it's, I take my life into my hands when it's a snowy day, especially.
We don't have so much signage of other stuff. I think there was a grant that was received a couple of years ago. So there are, I think, maybe two welcome to downtown signs.
There's one at all the exits on the highway. Remember all that exit one stuff?
Yeah.
There's a new sign there. I think there's a new sign on exit three. Is there a new sign on exit two?
Thinkpans? I can't remember off the top of my head. Check into what the signs are. I know there was a grant received and there was one, there's a sign that was put up. As you come over the Hinstow Bridge into Brattleboro. That's a fairly big sign though.
And do we have, I'm just looking at that picture, like, oh, public parking. Like, do we have like clear signs around town directing people?
Our wayfinding sign, our wayfinding was improved. I think the Downtown Association had some grants when it was building a better Brattleboro. And I think the town worked some with that. So I think it's better, it might be something that gets picked up on in this parking study or it's something that we could definitely survey about. I think we, we felt like we made improvements, but I don't know. I mean, people might not feel that way.
From a, from a design standpoint, there's a lot of different stuff going on.
Yes. I would not disagree.
Like every group that gets a grant designs their own. That's what it seems like anyway, so. Having, having wayfinding design standards might be really nice. I'm sure there are some consistency.
Sean, when you first came to town, how did you feel about getting around like with parking lots and that kind of stuff? If you had to use them, what did you feel?
Down, the parking was an issue in the beginning, but now I kind of have a better idea of where to park when I go downtown. But it's also changed a good amount. I used to visit a lot when I was living in northern Vermont and. Yeah, I, I guess, I assume that it'd get more familiar, I think. Yeah. I'm still not knowing half the streets that are brought up.
Another, another thing that comes up actually.
There we go, there we go. See, look, there's one of the downtown Brattleboro signs, but with lots of other signs around it.
And there's like, there's like 20 feet of fence that's plastic and white. And then there's chain link fence and then there's another kind of, yeah.
That's my favorite fence in town.
It's like, that looks great, but then there's all this other.
Looks like wall.
I absolutely hate that fence. I thought it should have looked, yeah, no, no, the, the white picket fence. I thought it should have been more in the character of the bridge, the kind of the bridge up there, the black red. Yes, yes, okay, good point.
There's so much really nice ironwork in Brattleboro.
Another piece just that I noticed when you were facing the Whitestone earlier that I guess talked a lot about in Keen. you guys talked a lot about in Keane, are the Kika, Kika.
The, the restaurant?
The banners. There's banners on that post in Keane, and that defines the downtown district. And, you know, it promotes different arts events, or community businesses, or just things about the community, and it's, it's.
Drunken college doors.
No.
No problem with that.
Can we clean up those wires? There's some wires on there.
Underground?
We did, when we did this Depostary project, we have actually put underground conduit down here, so that at some point, if we can get wire, because of these wires over here, we thought at any point, you know, if we could afford it, we could run them here. So, yeah, the above ground, especially in this area, there are some real high voltage stuff that runs behind, you know, along the train tracks behind these buildings, that I think are not so easy to deal with. I think there have been attempts, like this, I think, you know, is one of the big ones too. But yes, it's a mess. This is one of my favorite views of Brattleboro, too. I love the backs of these buildings.
It'd be interesting to have like a walkabout or something of the downtown, because I feel like I'm never looking out through these eyes, I mean, I guess I could, but.
You know, that's a really good outreach method, that we should save till later.
It is on my list, and I know you're leaving at 7:00, and Sean as well, and it's 6:56, but one of the outreach activities that I have was kind of a self-guided walkabout that people could do, so that they could take this, I mean, obviously, we could have organized ones, but they could take it and go on the route, and there's questions to kind of engage with as they go, which I thought was kind of.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
I think the farmer's market is great.
The farmer's market, doing outreach.
I think that worked really well, only to get board members.
Another, since we're on it, another idea, some of you will be leaving, was to come up with, it gets a little different, different demographic, is to do bar coasters, where people can write on them on the back, and, you know, you can ask a question or two, and they just write on them in the back, and then.
That's a great idea.
To get probably first impressions from people that are just, you know, who are actually traveling through town. I think they're pretty inexpensive to, to get, have designed. So that seems kind of like a fun way.
Just kind of reminds me of, I was at Yankee Stadium when they gave out Reggie bars, and all those Reggie bars ended up on the field.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it may only draw some in, but, or even, you know, I don't know, there'd be, I'm sure, a space at Restless Coaster, maybe, to kind of put up maybe some butcher block or something, I don't know, you know, just some other ways to, to get people.
That's great, like that feedback. I know, chalkboard that was downtown.
Yes, yeah.
Collecting lovely things, but we could also.
Yeah, I mean, this is something like that, or I saw one where they wrote on an empty store front window with, you know, something that washes off, that people could, could write on. I'm not sure, there's a couple empty, not too many, but. Anyway, so when we get to the outreach ideas, we'll keep the walkabout.
Yeah. Okay, I'm leaving.
All right, go rock out. Well, since we're, we're on this, I mean, I might be jumping around a little bit, but that's okay, since, I think that this is one of the areas, Liz called it out before, you know, the traffic is going to change down here, so what do we envision, you know, maybe what can happen with this bridge street? Again, we know we need to preserve some sort of access points for this building, we don't know whether or not there'll be a bike pad bridge here, or nothing here, or, you know, overlook, I think that's all up in the air, but there are businesses that need access, and there's the train. But I, one of the things I look at, and I'm like, well, this is just so wide, why would you? Right. So maybe there are ways to narrow it down, green it up.
But don't you think it's important to, to sort out the turning lanes? Because the, the corner is such a malfunction area.
Maintaining the corner lanes and.
Or if there's at least something to, to allow for when the train comes through, allow lots of cars to exit that. I know the stoplights downtown all stop when the train's in town, but if there's a way for, it would be nice to have at least a sidewalk next to the museum. I could push sidewalks all the time.
I always walk on the museum side.
On this, like, curb?
And again, trying to cross from Main Street to the museum.
That's one of my, that turn where you're about to get out of the co-op, or you're gonna turn left out of the co-op, and you can't see if there's traffic coming up, so you just have to gun it out and beat them? It's like moments like that, when you know the person in front of you is from Brattleboro or not. The other one is, um, Green Street, when you're coming off Elliot and up School Road, if they hesitate, they're not from Brattleboro, because that looks like you'd have to stop and yield.
This is, I mean, this is such an interesting intersection, and I know years, you know, at this point around about, it's probably moot because of the co-op's driveway. But I hadn't been thinking about the need to preserve a left and right turn off of here, I was kind of getting excited about the fact of kind of narrowing it down, and, you know, but I, you know, so I don't know what the level of traffic will be here, either. You know, certainly on a Friday or Saturday night, it's gonna be quite busy.
Difficult to plan without a traffic study. And you can't have the traffic study if you don't know what's really happening with the bridge, but I'm sure at some point, we're gonna have to study how that change is gonna affect malfunction junction.
Yeah. If not the timing of the lights, I mean, you know, so all this going to, I don't know if Google, state of New Hampshire, I mean, start state of Vermont, or whether they'll give the town money, I don't know how that will work. Unfortunately, I think this is always gonna be a fairly big barrier, but, you know, if the traffic is alleviated here, I agree, like sidewalk, you know, some sort of crosswalk here.
There's a nice, there's a nice little park there, at the Holstein Building.
The park?
Yeah, that's a nice, that's a nice little park.
Yeah.
But it's very.
It's so cut off.
What's it called?
That is.
No, I'm not sure, I didn't notice, because I'm not sure it was on Google.
You did?
Is it Fountain Park?
Fountain Park.
Yeah, I think it's Fountain Park, I think there is a fountain there, I don't know whether.
There is. There were goldfish in the grass.
Oh, really?
There were, there were goldfish in the grass.
Oh, really?
I don't know how they got there. They didn't walk, so it was.
For years, it was that.
Twig House.
Yes, that was.
I liked that.
Yeah.
So the other thing that would be nice, you can see from there, you can see the, sort of, the new little park area they put in, I was thinking, be able to connect those, would be nice to.
To connect the parks?
Yeah.
The sidewalk?
Yeah, well, yeah, like you're saying, the sidewalk, you could be walking straight from, you know, the crosswalk and going down to the other park, if it would be close to the river.
I think one thing maybe we wanna try to engage with in the master plan is better programming of this park. So regardless of what happens with the bridge, and what happens with the private business down here, the town owns this building, which is the archery building, doesn't seem like we're gonna be, we bought it with federal money, and, you know, current understanding is we need to have, hold on to it for a certain amount of time. I think having it sit in this state is, doesn't benefit anybody, so I think that's something that we're gonna wanna.
So, do you think there's federal money available to do something with it?
I don't know that there's money available. Well, we'd have to do a historic review, if we wanted to take it down, we can't easily sell it, because we bought it with federal money, and nobody's really sure what the recapture time on it is. There's been interest over the years of people using it, but not having any parking, or not being able to sell it, or be in some sort of arrangement to lease to own is always a problem, but deal breaker. We've had some estimates, you know, really sketchy estimates, it'd be quite expensive, and so the town isn't in a position to, hasn't been in a position to wanna make the upgrades of it, to then lease it out, so. You know, I think more programming of this space, maybe rehabbing that building, or to, or committing to do something with it, whether it's trying to lease it, remove it, whatever, is something that we're gonna wanna probably talk to the public about. And some of that might be also dependent on, well, I don't know, that it depends on whatever happens with the bridge here, who owns the bridge, or whether it exists.
Would they tear it down?
This building?
No, the bridge. Is that on the table?
Well, I don't, I don't know, I mean, New Hampshire didn't tear down the other bridges.
True.
But I think the problem is if they don't take it down, how are they gonna maintain it?
If it's not well maintained, and it's on their property?
I think so.
Yes.
So they tear it down, or they maintain it, or they sell it? Right?
We'll know in more tomorrow, maybe.
Okay.
When I find out what happened tonight, but, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how the Chesterfield Bridges have worked out, I know that there was a nonprofit that took over, kind of doing some beautification, and I think it got to the point where it needed maintenance, and the state of New Hampshire wasn't giving them money, and the nonprofit's like, well, we're dissolving. It's your problem now. So, I.
Yeah.
Don't know. How that will work out. Let's see. We talked about the gateways and a couple areas, like a couple ways that they could kind of, or the identity of downtown could be unified. Were there any other areas of entering downtown that seemed? Liz, you shook your head and said you didn't think gateways really needed too much improvements. I think the, the reality of the transportation system is, you know, we can probably address paths and things that we want improved, but, you know, we know there's not any places to put new streets in, make connections that way. So I think paths, you know, something along the wetstone, I was really intrigued by the path that you guys talked about at the last meeting, kind of going behind the recreation center and trying to make your way down, that was really cool. So I think we would put something like that out there. And even just some of the neighborhood paths, I know some of which are in consideration. So I think, is there anything else, maybe, that you wanna discuss about kind of the tr, existing transportation network, and?
I think Brattleboro takes on a very different personality when you come at it from Canal Street. Then, I think, maybe, any other? Another gateway?
It feels much older to me, when you come from Canal Street.
Definitely you get the idea of like, are we there yet? Because there's so many places where you think it might start.
Yeah, is this Main Street? Are we there?
Yeah.
I don't think it's as cute. I kind of encourage people to take exit 2.
Yeah. There's, you know, for Fire Street. It's a little bit more, what do you call it, like 1960s kind of strip development?
Yeah, and if you were coming from the south, and you wanted to get off, when you get into Vermont, because you were, you know, on a long drive or something, and this was the first exit, this would be where you would get off.
Yep.
Those spots are war in my mind, to get off the highway and go through.
It's only two more miles from. You might accidentally think you're in Brattleboro's downtown if you don't know much about the area, and get off at a little corner.
And I've heard the other way too, from my in-laws coming from the north, they thought downtown Brattleboro was Putney Road. So the first time, like, we took them to Main Street, and we're like, what's this town? This is Brattleboro.
Historic downtown, kind of historic downtown. I think signs don't start for that until you get to, onto something like that.
See, I don't, I don't feel like I'm in downtown here, I like that, and I know it's not a very one, but I like that you can now, because I know downtown, I know that's downtown, I think that, I just really like the co-op building for lots of different reasons, but, that you can see it from a distance from several places, I think is really cool. This definitely feels like the edge of downtown to me, you know, even more than anything on High Street, or, or Putney Road up near the Commons, just 'cause it's kind of what I'm used to. But I don't know how, you know, short of a sign, or, you know, some of the banners, or those kind of aesthetic kind of additions. No, I think the pedestrian environment's there. It's a pretty narrow, it's, you know, there's parking on, I think it's just this side of the road at the time, I don't think you can park on this side. I don't know, I think we have some, that's about.
While you're on, while you're moving, I just wanted to highlight, with the Putney Road and the Veterans Bridge, a lot of people walk through that area, I was talking about walking quarters, and we, you mentioned tents, and people recently passed away, but you hit by the train, I think in at least one of the cases, that's what they were trying to do, is to get from downtown to the Putney Road area or back. And there's, once you get to the Veterans Bridge, and you keep going, it just gets worse, there's just not really safe places for people to walk, and as it is, you know, when you're on the ground, usually driving, and it's scary enough pulling out of the main parking lot with cars, but then when you're also like looking like, is there anybody trying to cross the road here?
Yeah.
It's just something to think about, too, when you're thinking about access to downtown, gateways to downtown, that one's a little dangerous.
Yeah.
Carry that as a tip here.
There are a few great sidewalks and walkways going up Canal Street, up to the hospital and beyond, I bet they do.
Yeah, the one, the one place on Canal Street that comes to mind that could be improved for walking would be Pine Street, there's, I don't think there's a crosswalk still near there, between Pine Street and the ones at Maple.
Maple, oh, that one's ugly.
That one's a little rough.
That's got poor visibility, especially when you're coming south on Canal Street, so I think it could be intentional that there's no crosswalk there, but I'm not sure. I think that's one we constantly get.
You have to turn really quickly if you're gonna go on to Maple from like, the hospital.
All right. Do, would you wanna talk a little bit about public outreach?
Sure, yeah.
Continue our, our previous conversation.
Back to the previous. As I mentioned earlier, we don't necessarily have a, we don't have a contract in place, and nor do we have a finalized schedule yet of what the consultant will be doing, but Brad and I were thinking of, when the consultant goes out, because they will be doing some outreach about parking, we should probably be ready to kind of roll out some activities too. When we did the land use regulations, we had written a lot of the regulations, and then we took a draft out. I think this is a bit different, where we actually need to, early on, get some feedback to help guide our work, I mean, I know we've kind of been kicking around some ideas here that we'll use as well, but we need to go out early for a master plan, and then we need to go back out for saying, here's the plan, what do you think of it? And we did something, with the land use regulations, I think we, we attempted some things, some were successful, some that were less successful, but what we've found is that we really need to go where people are, you know, the traditional meeting, yeah, we're probably gonna have to hold one or two, but we're gonna need to be in places where people are to, to kind of engage them, so the farmer's market did work out really well.
Yeah, I think so.
I think there are neighborhood organizations, whether it's, um, DBA or FEAT or, um...
Was it Brattleboro?
Was this downtown master plan? Or, you know, like I'm just thinking, if, if we're engaging the Tyler North Street neighborhood, 'cause that borders downtown, you know, having some sort of discussion with the neighborhood groups is probably going to be important. I'm sure there's people in the, um, um, tree streets. I know Chris Grackey writes on that at Brattleboro about the lack of trees and wouldn't it be great to have some trees brought back to the tree streets and stuff, so there might be voices to be heard there too.
How about those, um, lunchtime things at the River Garden?
Yeah, yeah. Getting on that.
It's a good idea.
Do the tree streets have the type of tree that their street says on the street?
Oak Street has maybe two oaks left.
Spruce Street doesn't.
No, just spruce left.
Not like.
Yeah.
Maybe one has.
Have you, um, have you guys been involved with anything that you thought was particularly successful, um, for your arts organization or?
I made this.
Oh, awesome! I love it.
My favorite idea though was, um, having a plein air event in downtown where artists could both capture what's there, but also a vision of what's there.
That's great. I know in Newport they have an event like that and they wrap all the art with chairs.
Yeah, yeah. Um, they do one in King, they, they offer a purchase award and the downtown group buys the winning artwork. Yeah, it's just...
And how does, how does that work? Like, because they're giving their time, right?
Yeah, um, or it could be organized as a, uh, I don't know how Brattleboro works at this, but he partnered with like Arts Council of Union County or something to do something during a gallery walk um, weekend where they would just, they would host a plein air event, which usually, um, is just a, an opportunity for artists to be out in the, in nature and wherever.
I think it'd have to be like, they'd do that on Friday night or Saturday morning and then on Sunday there'd be some sort of auction when they're finished.
That's pretty cool.
When does King do theirs?
Uh, June.
Do tell. You got more?
Yeah, I was, I was doing some reading into some other organizations that I know of that do, that do arts engagements for planning.
I, before we get off of that one, um, I worked with Dover where we had a couple of artists. Um, I worked with the River Gallery, River Valley Arts, River Valley Arts School. Which one is it?
In Brattleboro?
In Brattleboro. The River Gallery, okay, I said River Gallery and then I said... Um, this was probably ten years ago, and, um, they came to Dover and they had, people would sit down with them and they would sketch out, you know, what their vision was, and so some of them were just, you know, a park on Route one hundred with a playground, you know, it was, it was very cool, and I had done it at a Brownfields event, one of their conferences where the Army Corps put this on, and it was, people were really engaged in it, and we paid the artists, you know, they had, they had some sort of stipend, but it worked really well and, and they could leave with their drawing. But, you know, at the same time, I don't wanna take advantage of artists, you know?
Yeah, but if we had some sort of agreement, we could give them each a certain stipend.
Of course, there's no funding for any of them.
I don't know yet. I mean, I think that we're gonna need to commit some resources, so we're gonna have to find it. But, you know, like even if, if we're targeting something like the waterfront area, you know, to kind of narrow it down. I think those, the artists we worked with there, you know, kind of wanted a couple target areas so that they weren't, 'cause they didn't necessarily know Dover very well.
But there are lots of artists that know Brattleboro very well.
More ideas, Jessica?
Well, another project I was part of was doing, um, a complete street visioning. So it was like a one-day installation of what if this street looked different, you know? It was sort of, it was some of these things like structures and, uh, sort of, um, you know, fake potted plants and things.
Mike Strode did something like that under college with bicycle, uh, lanes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or even, yeah, some pop-up events.
Yeah, it was just like a pop-up installation, like what's, what could this be?
Tactical organization.
Yes.
I don't know if you could encourage the downtown group to do some, like, guerrilla pop-up planning?
So do we, or else? A historic district on Main Street?
We do, we do.
More ideas?
So many more.
Hand listed anonymously?
Well, no, yeah, um, another thing I was thinking about was, you know, the, uh, the museum does that Lego competition every year. I'm wondering if we could get them to bring their Legos and get some kids and, you know, have a, have a multi-generational opportunity to engage with us.
Do, like Legos in the park day or something?
Something.
Where at least, yeah, you get people...
I don't know what your park does like.
Maybe they have like giant Legos. You know, like they have like human, um, chess pieces, things like that.
They do have like a million Legos.
They do?
The museum.
Do they own them?
No, no, the, the particular people who run it, they have them all.
So there's like a, they come in as an exited area as an event? Okay. Find out. Yeah. We can keep going.
Well, um, last night the Manabah Conservancy did a really neat event where they, um, they invited people from their community that had conserve lands or loved conserve lands or volunteered and just come in and tell stories. Everybody told, like Moss Radio Hour sort of, everybody told a five or 10 minute story and, um...
I was reading about storytelling, um, the Orton Foundation, I don't know if you know the Orton Foundation, they do a lot of storytelling. And it was like, oh no, you know, maybe do this with high schoolers, but I like, yeah, targeting, um...
You know, a certain, maybe get grant.
Well, one of the really cool things that I've been hearing a lot of stories about recently, I don't know if it's 'cause of what's been happening, like arts events in Brattleboro or 'cause somebody's throwing a party at the Moles Eye next weekend.
I saw.
I, I've been hearing a lot of stories about, oh yeah, back in the seventies, this was like party central and gay bar central and before you could like feel comfortable in the cities, you could feel comfortable in Brattleboro if you were gay. Um, just, I felt that those were some really cool stories to hear about, you know?
Yeah.
With kids' place, there was a gay bar in kids' place.
Yeah.
I got to do some of that stuff.
Okay.
That could be cool to get a, a walk.
How did they manage to get, like, um, liquor license to fix their tax issues?
Well, Moles Eye doesn't own it anymore.
Oh, no, it's, um, the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust is throwing a fundraising party there.
Oh, good.
It's their thirtieth birthday, so...
I didn't know it was Redona as a pub.
They wanna open it.
I don't know if this is an idea or not, but, um, I'm following the Historical Society's Facebook page and they do really, um, I don't know who Del set up, but they, they do, um, really cool like, um, sort of like themes and they post photos, like it was circuses for a week or two. And that could be another way, you know, engaging people in neighborhoods if there are, I would get excited about this, if there were photos of like my neighborhood through the ages, you know, and then extending that and so what would I like to see happen in the future?
Yeah, the, um, the Cheshire Historical Society does pop-ups, like bring your relics um, around certain themes and...
Some of the neighborhoods were very different, like the north end of Main Street, they posted photos from recently and it was very residential, I mean, you know, from like the intersection from High Street, it was just little houses.
I know the bank, the Savings and Loan, that's really nice, pictures of downtown throughout the ages.
It's, um, you mentioned Facebook. We don't have a Facebook page. I just got approval for the Conservation Commission to have a Facebook page, um, because we have a social media policy for town. It needs to be the town manager that approves that, but, you know, I think it is definitely some sort of, um, it, it's a media that we wanna look at. I don't do Twitter, I could learn Twitter and, you know, that was what we wanted to do.
I mean, there's, there's interesting demographics which you could look into. I know with, with me, Facebook is the way I talk with other middle-aged moms who don't get enough, because we have kids. I know from talking with other middle-aged moms who have children who are like, you know, fifteen and older, they don't use Facebook. They're using Snapchat or probably the thing that came after Snapchat, but I don't even know what it is, but, yes. So you, it's, it's, I think you could catch a demographic with Facebook that might be people who are, want to be very engaged with this kind of thing, but, you know, if they're a reason, like they've got kids, it's hard.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Music, I think so.
I also think, um, yeah, there's the unprofessionals, I think we're probably gonna wanna reach out to that, that group. I don't know how much, maybe you can speak to it, or, I don't know, maybe you're involved with it. Are there a lot from outside of Brattleboro or is it? It might be good to try to, you know, do some event, whether it's at the Wetstone Station, you know, some place with food and drink.
I could talk to Alex about it. Alex Beck runs the group. And see if we could come up with something that, um, maybe involves beer or something. And then we could get everybody talking about our town and...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be Brattleboro people only, because people come to Brattleboro.
There's also people that live here for a couple of years and go to NACCA.
I think, I think the group is mostly Brattleboro though, um, but depending on the event, also attracts people from all over.
Jessica, what else is there?
Oh, I don't know.
Don't be shy.
Something that I saw at a wedding one time and I thought it was cool, it's a wish tree. The idea that, it's a, a tree, and they have one at Golden Street School, a tree where you put tags on with a, with a wish written on it.
Cool, I think Burlington may have done something like that, but they went, you know, they had, they had grant funding, they hired an artist or commissioned an artist to, to do, you know, a pretty amazing, probably a 3D tree. And, yeah, that's pretty neat. I like that idea. But even if it was just two-dimensional and, you know, like, kind of gets the chalkboard type thing too.
Yeah, yeah, similar. Then you have to capture that, you know?
Yes.
How do you guys after that?
Yeah. That's, that's possible. Um, you know, maybe something that we can do with one of the schools and then working maybe with BCTV. This is another one that came out of heart and soul, thank you. It was a local voices pass the mic project and to see the North Fork Valley through the eyes of seven young reporters. So they would, um, they spoke to a couple of different people, um, and then they would talk about what it was like to be a teenager. And I mean, we've tried doing, with the, with the town plan, we did engage high school students and that was really interesting. So finding some way to work with students would be good, I think. Whether we just go into the schools again and get feedback or we find another way could be interesting. BCTV runs summer camps, we should start talking to them.
Anything else, Jessica? Well, that's so great. Thank you for giving it so much thought.
Something I, I'm like personally like excited about.
Great, yeah. Great.
Anybody else?
We've got plenty of time, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, now we need to really start working on a hard schedule and, you know, to, because like I said, we wanna be able to go out with at least some things and at least what the project is when we go out with some parking study stuff, which will be probably early this summer, so...
Shall we adjourn? All in favor?
It's one for second, the motion for adjournment?
Not for adjournments. Thank you.